All right. Well, good afternoon, everyone, and I'd like to call this Board of Health meeting of May 28, 2020 to order. And thank you all for joining us. And how many people do we have zooming?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. That's great. So thank you for everyone joining and everyone's hard work during this pandemic. It's very much appreciated. It doesn't go unnoticed by townspeople and certainly elected officials, everyone involved. Anyway, so I'm going to turn over the meeting to Dr. Newman from the Board of Health to go over a couple of the, he's got a couple of hearings going on for the Board of Health. So Dr. Newman.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We're going to start talking about the septic system upgrade to 337 Granite Street. And Leslie, do you want to address that?
Sure. Is John Judd on the call? I know he's trying to get on.
Don't see him on here, Les. I know he usually does video and I'm not seeing him. We have, let's see. Waiting room is showing as empty at the moment.
Maybe we can move on to the next agenda item and then we'll come back to this one.
Okay, makes sense. Okay. We have a hearing to address Jay Doyle.
Join the meeting.
Jay Doyle backhoe service septic installer permit. Consideration of revocation for failure to comply with Title V requirement for a construction permit. Leslie, do you want to address that one?
Sure. I see Jim's on the call. Thank you, Jim. We were contacted by an engineer who was doing a title five inspection on a septic system. And well, that it had failed. We talked about how to proceed and part of the procedure was that the installer would pull a permit to do the work. However, I was informed later on by the engineer that the work had occurred. And yet the installer, Mr. Doyle had not pulled a permit. So I asked both of them, the engineer and the installer, to put in writing what happened. And it seemed to me that, well, Mr. Doyle can explain from his perspective what happened, but it seemed as though, I don't understand why he didn't pull a permit. So I guess that's why we've asked him to come.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here. When the project first started, it was a Title V inspection. There'd been a sale of the property. And Randy Burley was contacted by the Title V. And we went out there and I uncovered what he wanted. And we went back and forth and it went, there were some dates. I don't have the exact dates and it came and it was a failed system. It needed to be replaced, or part of it needed to be replaced because of roots in the system. And I had called not Leslie, but I called the Board of Health one time and I, everything else is on me. And I've said that in the letter I sent to Leslie. And I never, my knowledge got a response on that. And with everything going on, I still understood. I just let it, I let it go and I, it's on me. And I talked to Randy and we, we got it done. He didn't mention a permit, which isn't his, his duty to do that either. And I, and I just, I apologize. I tried to, I'm trying to make it good now. And whatever you guys decide to do to me, I, I can't take it back. I did, I did it and I've never done that before. And I used to have Leslie on my cell phone for contact and my phone lost everything. So I've lost all phones, numbers I had because I could talk to her direct, get ahold of her and I would have called her direct and I didn't. So that's no excuse for that either. But I guess whatever it is, you gotta, it's fine. And since then, I've sent him the money and Randy, I think, sent him the permit for it. And that's been gone forward. Is that right, Leslie?
We received the permit application and we received a fee.
Okay.
All right. Comments from members? Sid?
Yeah. So if I understand it right, system failed. Jim Doyle and Mr. Burley would have checked it out and decided there need to be repairs on it. And the repairs were made in a workmanlike manner, as he's been doing for the last 30 years. The system was engineered or the repairs were overseen by the engineer as it has been done in the past by a reputable engineer. And the issue comes down to want of a paper in the middle of a very confusing time. I find this to be, this, yeah, this is an oversight, perhaps. One or the other should have double checked. Perhaps the Board of Health should have answered its phone in a more timely fashion. But when all is said and done, I see this as no consequence to the public health. And there are issues of greater moment and nearer consequence that we should be dealing with. The public health has not been challenged, ruined or compromised. The town has been paid the fee. And Mr. Doyle has apologized and will be diligent in the future not to do it again. So I would make a motion to accept the system as acceptable, well engineered. And Mr. Doyle's apologized for it. Town's been paid. And let's get on to real public health issues. I make that as a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Hi, this is Bruce. Leslie, do you think that's appropriate?
If that's what the board decides, then it's appropriate.
I'll second your motion, Sid. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with Zoom. I'm on the phone.
I just sent you an email about that.
I'm having a problem with my speaker as well. Can you hear me?
All garbled, yeah.
Yeah. So I actually didn't hear a lot of what just happened. So I'm going to have to not vote on this one. I'm sorry.
I can repeat it if you'd like, if you can hear now.
Well, I can hear you, but I didn't hear the conversation with Mr. Doyle. I didn't hear any of it. I'm sorry. My whole computer turned off.
Yeah, in, in.
If it must give me the Reader's Digest version of it, I'm sorry.
I could summarize, Mr. Doyle, do you want to, in a nutshell, just, just the summary of what she said?
Yes, that's fine. It started out as a Title V inspection. And we found more wrong. And it needed to be upgraded. Randy, he was in and out of there. Back and forth, and we decided what had to be done. And so I made one phone call. That's the only thing I made, never, never heard anything. But with everything going on, I just, I'd let it go. And and we fixed it. Randy saw everything. We took pictures of everything. And then Randy did the paperwork and the money was submitted to the town. As of notifying the Board of Health, that was my fault and I apologize. That was on me. And I can't say anything else.
Thank you.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is just an oversight. It was a, you know, something that's basically never happened before. And I second your motion.
Thank you. Bruce, do you have any other comments?
No, that's fine.
Sadie?
I agree. I mean, I think, you know, I think it's, it sounds, it sounds appropriate. I just, you know, I just wouldn't want this to become like a common theme because I do think it's important to kind of, you know, you know, the rules are to be followed. But I do understand that this is a difficult time. And I appreciate his apology.
Thank you. And my thoughts are that I agree, these things, you know, can happen. We have to consider, you know, the reasons for having a permit before projects are undertaken. And are we setting a precedent in the future? I mean, it sounds as if the work was done well ultimately and there's no public health consequence. But that can't be guaranteed in the, in the future. So those are, those are my comments. Any other comments from members of the Board of Health? So Sid, could you just repeat your motion, please?
Yes. The motion, the gist of it is that upon review and inspection, a workmanlike system was put in, overseen by an engineer, the, there is no risk to the public health. And it was an oversight which was apologized for by a person who's been reputable in this town for the last 30 years. And since the town's been paid, I would accept the matter as closed, finished and accepted.
Okay. So no other comments. We'll take the roll. Sid, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Sadie?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thank you for coming in, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you very much.
And to get back to 337 Granite Street, do we have the parties here?
John Judd is now on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. John Judd, professional engineer with Gateway Consultants, representing Dana Griffin for this property at 337 Granite Street. This is a property that I think everyone's familiar with. As you're heading into Gloucester, just past the lobster pool on the right, it's, it's actually had a for sale sign on it. It's an elevated ranch house that extends down with the backside touching folly cove as shown on the plan, if you do have that plan available. But it basically, it's a septic system repair. Leslie and I did soil testing out here late last year. Actually, it was back in January. And so we were able to design a new compliance system with a passive sand filter designed. We are looking for variances from the board for setbacks to the coastal bank and the adjacent quarry that's on this property as well as the adjacent property to the, to the east. So the variances include reduced setbacks to the coastal bank and the quarry as well as the reduction, one foot reduction to the seasonal groundwater table with the use of these advanced treatment system. And it'd be a much improved system over the failed system that's there, obviously. I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Leslie, do you want to give us your perspective? Leslie, we can't hear you.
I can hear you, Leslie. Your mic's open.
All right. Thank you. I think the plan is very good. I have no issues. I think it should be approved.
Thank you. Comments from the Board of Health? Or questions?
Yes, I'm trying to, I'm looking at the plans now here on my cell phone. It's a little funny to watch some, see this on a cell phone. But I'm trying to figure out, is this on the same side as Lobster Pool or the opposite side?
It's on the same, the same side. Yeah.
And is it right next door to the Lobster Pool?
No, it's several houses down from the Lobster Pool as you head toward Gloucester.
Okay. So right now, the septic system is, I see that the proposed loop vent is, it says the variance is needed for the, how far is it now and how far should it be in the water or the mean high water mark?
So the existing setback is essentially the same. It's a subsurface field that would be replaced with this new Presby sand filter, but we're raising it up. The big difference is that we're going to be raising it up and we're going to be taking out all the the failed stone and components and raising it up with new C33 sand. And the setbacks to the wetlands will not be any closer or any further than what they are now. But we will be raising the system up to create an adequate setback or offset, I should say, from the groundwater table.
So what you had there prior was not raised?
Correct.
Okay. But in the same spot? So you're not going any further towards the ocean? But so it's the same distance to the ocean, but except it's going to be raised with your fancy sand?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the proposal as, as submitted. Do I need to cite the document?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, why don't we take the roll? Sid?
Yes.
Bruce? Mary Beth?
Yes.
Sadie?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Okay. Leslie, we had another item regarding a fee schedule amendment.
That would have been if we had taken, if we had taken some action against Mr. Doyle, we might have wanted to set a fee for reinstating a suspended permit.
So you feel there's no issue that we need to address now?
Correct.
Leslie, do you think we should have one in place anyhow?
I think we couldn't wait to do that in the future.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
Any other comments about this?
I think the issue was moot.
Okay. All right. If there's no objection, then we'll, we'll not proceed with that issue. The last thing on the Board of Health section of the agenda is represent, to I guess, appoint a representative to the school reopening committee. And that was discussed a bit in emails before the meeting. And received emails from Sid and from Mary Beth. You folks want to comment at all?
I'll comment just from the point of view of Dr. Librow wants a representative of the Board of Health to be on the school reopening committee, which is prudent and appropriate. And I would nominate Mary Beth Murphy because of her involvement with the school as the champion of that cause.
And Mary Beth, you've expressed interest in being representative?
Yes, that's fine. I would be happy to do that. I was sent today by Rob, the video call from the Department of Education. Basically sort of out, it was a long call, but just sort of outlining all the issues for reopening. And I can tell you that the issues are pretty, it's, there's a lot of issues to, to consider. And the way I see it is it's going to take a bit of a lot, a sort of, a lot of input from, to make people feel comfortable to go back to school from, you know, I think what Barb McCarthy might have to offer, just as her position in the hospital. And so I would, was wondering if it would be prudent for not only myself to be on it, but if Barb could be either a liaison or a second member on that committee so that we could, we could tap into her knowledge. I don't know if she's tapped out with committees. But I would suggest we had two people.
All right. Any other comments from the Board of Health?
I think it would be great to have Barb on that committee too. And Mary Beth, I think you're going to do, that would be great for you to be there. I'm so happy that you'd be a representative.
And Barb, you're on the?
So, yeah, I got, I got a lot of meetings going on. But anyway, Mary Beth did share with me the presentation from the Department of Education. I did not get a chance to take a look at that today. My thought is that I would attend the first couple of meetings they had, kind of get the lay of the land, see where the intersection of my knowledge and their need sort of meet. And then maybe could be a liaison, Mary Beth, with you.
I just think that, you know, we're, there's going to sort of have to be a dual effort between, you know, hospital testing to get this whole thing figured out. And I just would feel more comfortable if I had you at the ready, maybe not necessarily at every meeting. I can volunteer for that. But just sort of there to answer questions like, like as a liaison at least.
Yep. You know where to find me. We'll find each other. That's no problem.
Barb, you're becoming an expert.
Oh, my lordy B, you guys owe me a lot of money.
Check's in the mail.
Geez. You know, I'm down to 50 cents an hour now.
Mary Beth?
No worries, Mary Beth. I will help you.
Okay.
Thank you very much for volunteering, both of you. Do we have to have a motion for this or do we just thank Mary Beth and Barb?
Either way, your choice.
To unmute Rob Lebo's microphone at any point to, to talk about this. The one thing that I did hear on the call this morning was that the local school boards for all of their activities that they're planning, including graduation, which is coming up next Friday, should sort of get a blessing from their local boards of health. Rob, did you hear that today at that, during that call? And so I'm just wondering if you need anything besides, you know, having a representative on your committee from the board?
I think it might be helpful to have the blessing, at least for what we are going to do on the fifth, which I think we've already sort of talked about. We run it by the police. It's a drive-through graduation. And what happened was the Commission of Education put out some guidance at, at their level that they were talking about more virtual type things. And with extenuating exceptions, they would allow the drive-through type graduations that people plan. Ours is, ours is pretty controlled in terms of, you know, cars lining up, one car at a time, graduate gets out, everybody else stays in the vehicle, car moves on. But the advice was so that we didn't have a lot of questions to try to have the Board of Health approve that format. The one we were talking about doing in August is still up in the air and we would have to come back to you folks anyway with regard to the outside plan for a possible more realistic type graduation ceremony. But I think it would be helpful. Their advice was to, you know, see if the Board of Health could get on board with that. But they also thought that most people could probably get away without that. But I think it makes it more secure if we had that. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, I think there's two things here. One, I think we, we need to get a representative on that. And then as a second issue, we can vote to agree with what Dr. Librow has said. With respect to the school reopening committee, I would envision that Mary Beth at each of our meetings would give the Board of Health an update. And if there are any medical issues, the Board of Health can raise those concerns and solicit and send those to the committee via Mary Beth. So I don't see that we're sending her out as the forlorn whore. But as the point person who will keep us appraised of what's going on.
Yep.
We're also not going to have to invent the wheel necessarily. The, the commissioner's part of his call promised that by mid-June, they would be issuing their guidelines as to what they thought was appropriate. It had been run by a select committee, including medical professionals and all that. But it obviously had to be tailored to the individual local communities. And ours has unique advantages and unique disadvantages. But, you know, as an example really quick of difficulties, they talk about transportation buses. So if you read the sort of underlying thing, they say their recommendation will be that you do one student per seat and you only occupy every other seat. Well, if you think about a bus that normally has 60, you know, elementary kids on it, three a seat, then how many runs would you have to put together to get your elementary kids to school? Temperatures taken at doorways, who does that? You know, where does all the thermometers and who's the judge of, you know, the temperature being taken being proper or not and having that done confidentially? Having classroom seating be a minimum of six foot separation, not only from the person in front of you, but the person behind you and to either side. Well, if you've got a 20-student classroom and you go by the doorway and you sort of look in and all the desks are filling the spaces, you're basically taking out two-thirds of those desks. And then they're talking about staggered schedules and some kids will come one day, some kids come another. But I don't think it's going to have to be, we're going to have to invent the, the system. They'll give us the, the baseline guidelines and then we'll tailor it and tweak it, you know, to Rockport so it fits. And to have Mary Beth on there and also Barbara, I think would be, would be awesome. You know, we've got a lot of other things that wouldn't necessarily take Barbara's time. I think her in a consultant role, like we talked about, being at the first meeting, getting the lay of the land and then getting called back based on an agenda would be important to be able to do. I think Mary Beth being on there consistently is really important. She wears a parent hat as well. There's a lot of fear about, you know, some parents may say, I'm not sending my kid to your school till there's a vaccine. So if that got traction, you could have quarter of your school population having to be educated, but not in the school building while you're still trying to run traditional school. The other one that's a little bizarre is close down your big spaces like cafeterias. So you would serve lunch, which becomes a whole nother Board of Health type thing in classrooms. The lunch would be cooked in the cafeteria, in the kitchen and packaged in theoretically little styrofoam things and then delivered to each classroom where, not 20, because you can't have 20 anymore, where your isolated section of that particular day's educational clients received their meal. And then how healthy is that? Are the meals still warm? All those kinds of things that become a Board of Health serving type issue, right? Are the temperatures proper? Who's delivered them? Those are really tough questions for, no matter where we are, but certainly are more difficult in some huge high school somewhere with 1,500 kids or whatever than it is at our setup. But.
But were you specifically asking now for our approval of just the, the drive-through?
Had heard that call correctly. And they had suggested that to make it as safe as possible with regard to what people were going to do for the initial graduation piece, which they had basically said, you go ahead and do what you want. And then they came out with this guidance like at the last minute saying, oh, they should be more virtual. But in extenuating circumstances, work with your Board of Health. So I, I think you folks, you folks putting a sort of stamp on that, you know, taking a vote that you approve the model we're using on the fifth would just make it as secure as possible from anybody who had those, you know, that memo. as possible from anybody who had those, you know, that memo saying, "Hey, you didn't get your Board of Health approval for that."
So, I guess, Rob, thank you for that long explanation. I think Mary Beth is the perfect person to represent the Board of Health on, on the re, the school reopening committee. And you summarized some of the issues. It's not going to be easy, it's going to be complex. And I agree with you that the state is doing a phenomenal job of providing the fundamental guidelines for reopening, whether it's the schools or businesses, and we need to tailor their guidance to meet our particular.
Deanna Daffey.
Join the meeting.
Because, you know, we, you know what's best as far as the school is concerned. You know, the business community and the Board of Selectmen know our situation here for reopening places of business. So I like the idea of using the DESI information as a foundation, and then building on it as we need. And I'm, I'm happy to make a motion that the Board of Health approve the June 5th graduation plan that you have developed, and then we'll take it from there.
I second that motion.
Any other discussions?
One slight amendment to it, Bruce, because they're really cautious to say, "It is not a graduation. Don't use graduation."
Okay.
That then opens the door for, "You're having a graduation ceremony." No, we're celebrating our seniors' last time in school, whatever you want to call it. Don't use the word graduation.
Thank you. I accept that friendly amendment. You have a second?
I second.
And any other discussion? Sid?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Sadie?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Great. Thank you very much, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth and Barb.
We appreciate your support, and we wish we could invite you to witness it, but the guidelines won't allow that. So it, it's going to be virtual, it's going to be posted, it'll be on Facebook, kids will all receive a copy of it, so you will get to see how nice it is. Rhiannon Hurst is going to sing the National Anthem at the beginning of it, and if you've never heard her sing, you haven't, you know, been anywhere to hear a young voice like that since Kiva Trumbor would, would sing. So we're hoping to put as nice a thing together as we can. My virtual background is all about what seniors did last year, and we want to make this as special for those kids as we possibly can. So thank you very much for your support, and we'll try not to let you down in any way.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Anything else from the Board of Health? No, thank you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Board of Health-specific section of the agenda.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Newman.
Thanks.
Let's head on to letter D, COVID-19 testing updates. I believe that, would that be Barb McCarthy?
Yeah, it is, thank you. We're actually no further along than we were last week, except that we've done a couple of things. We're looking at our, all the tests that have been done so far at our drive-through site, and we're trying to identify what percent of those tests are from Cape Ann zip codes, to see if we can get a feel for what the numbers look like, should we open a second site. The second thing, and that's being compiled as we speak, the second thing is that, is to put out a query to the medical staff and ask them a couple of things. And, you know, don't quote me on this, because we haven't nailed down the questions, but where have been our gaps in our testing protocols so far? Do you have patients that wouldn't be able to get to a testing site? Whether we put it in Gloucester, or PBD, or Danvers? Are there patients, patients who aren't going to be able to get there? And what has been the, if any, adverse outcome to the inability to get tested to this point, to their knowledge? Lastly, would those patients, if they had been tested, would it have changed your management of those patients at all? So we're putting together a small survey, hoping to get it out through the PHO, Physician Hospital Organization, beginning of next week, to see if we can sort of nail down what is the best option, because we probably have two or three options on the table, and we want to make sure that when we do this, that we're going to do it for the right reasons, and that it will, it will help solve the gap that we have, and not just continue to perpetuate maybe what is a problem that we haven't addressed. So I hope that's a long answer to a short question, sorry.
No. Selectman Wilkinson?
Yeah, Barb, this is Sarah. I'm not sure if you saw this, but Representative Brad Hill posted today that the CVS and Ipswich is now adding a drive-through testing there. So interesting to note, I'm not sure if he was involved in getting it there. My guess is he might have been, because I think the post was started with, like, you asked, so, you know, like, meaning the voters asked, so there you go. So that's interesting to note.
Thank you. We have had some discussion about testing methods and tests, the tests themselves. We do know, and we need to do a little bit more research on this, we do know that the CVS model potentially is a self-swab, and how they're training folks to do their self-swabs may not be a deep nasopharyngeal specimen, not to get too detailed with you folks on the phone that might be eating supper. But anyway, it may not be the best, to get the best result. So we're going to look into that a little further, to see whether all CVS sites are doing self-swabbing, or whether just selected ones. But thank you, Sarah, we will approach that as well. That's one of the options on the table, is to partner with CVS.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted you to know that.
Barb?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, when you have a minute?
Uh, who, oh, Selectman Campbell?
Yeah, I, I don't want to step on a vacuum, wait if you'd like, or I can go, whatever you'd like me to do.
No, go ahead.
Okay, good. So a few meetings ago, we had talked about this, about the CVS option, and somebody was going to reach out. Did we ever make any traction on that? Was there any, ever any outcome from that? Can somebody update me on that, please?
Yeah, I, I think Selectman Campbell wasn't at the last meeting, but Barb, McCarthy, and Ruth have made a significant amount of progress. They have a couple different testing options that they're working on. Barb, we can, we can re, go back to you if we need to.
No, well, I got that. It was, it was just the CVS component is all I was really interested in. I was at the last meeting, not the one before that, so I was, maybe that's the meeting that was.
That's the meeting, it was that, yeah, two, it was a two, two ago, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So, so yes, actually, we have reached out to the new CVS at Gloucester Crossing. As you can imagine, they're loading the store with goods at this time, trying to figure out what their staffing plan looks like, trying to get up and running. And so they were not, you know, testing wasn't in their first plan, but they know that we're interested in talking to them, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
Barb, I don't know whether you saw, beginning yesterday, DPH is generating testing data by community. And this would be helpful context. Rockport, as of yesterday, had 345 persons tested for a testing rate of 5.3%, and our positive rate, this is for PCR, is 22%. Gloucester's testing rate is around 5% too. Cape Ann is at 5%. So clearly, there is a need in Cape Ann, I think, for a more local testing. So those data should be, being generated every week by DPH, and we can, you know, have them available for folks.
Yeah, agree. And we, we saw that data, you're right, Bruce, and just trying to figure out, is that because, yeah, we're trying to figure out what the next step is to make sure that we answer the right question, and put the, put it in the right place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Wedmore?
Yeah, a question for Bruce. Bruce, on that, that testing that you didn't, that you alluded to in Rockport, the percentage of positives was how much?
It was 22%. Very, very, it was the highest community in Cape Ann. I think, I think that's probably driven by Denmark positive tests.
Okay, well, that was the question, is, is that symptomatic people, or is that all-comers?
That's all tests that are in the DPH database.
So we don't know whether they're symptomatic or asymptomatic, and how much of each?
Correct. These represent individuals, not tests, because, as you know, any person can be tested multiple times. So this is unique individuals, so I assume some of them may have been asymptomatic, became symptomatic, or conversely, were symptomatic, and then, then they tested asymptomatic, or then they retested.
The genesis of that question is, if a good proportion of those people were asymptomatic, then we have more to worry about.
Yeah. I, I just don't know, Sid. I can see if DPH has, can look at testing by symptomatic versus asymptomatic. I'll, I'll ask.
Thank you.
So Sid, this is Barb. Right now, we still, for, for using the test kits that we have through the hospital, which would be Lahey, Danvers, include them, we are only testing, continuing to test either symptomatic individuals, or very narrowly-selected asymptomatic individuals. So my guess is the majority of those are symptomatic and/or asymptomatic at Denmark.
Okay.
And there'd be an occasional one other person, but I, I think the majority of those have symptoms. And, and we don't have approval yet to use our test kits for just the random asymptomatic individual that doesn't have contact with a COVID-positive patient. So we're waiting, I'm waiting for that, and I've, I've raised the flag on that to the system.
What is the capacity like, Barb?
And I think that's what the system's nervous about, is that once that capacity, once that opens up to, we test levels, sort of, you know, we have 11 in the system, we're doing levels one through six right now, so I'm calling this level seven. Once it opens to that level of more of a public health surveillance model of testing asymptomatic individuals, then I think that it would exceed our capacity of test kits. So I think that's what they're a little bit nervous about, and watching closely. And hoping that we'll get something like point-of-care testing in the meantime that might help us, but that doesn't sound good either. So, you know, we've got testing methodology, we've got test kits, we've got options for the best way to test, we've got a couple of different databases, we've reached out to different folks and different people. So I think, I mean, I spend most of my day on testing. I know more about tests than any good nurse should know. And so we definitely should keep it on the agenda and talk about it at each meeting, but know that it's, it's still a wide-open discussion, for sure.
Is there any movement in getting testing at Beverly Hospital? Has that, we gotten any luck there?
I would, I would, I would say that Beverly is probably going to be the last place that we would, that we'd keep it at Danvers and add something more local to Cape Ann.
I'm talking about the lab, Barb, in order to increase.
Oh, the lab.
Capacity, yeah.
Um, yeah, you know what? I think we, we have enough capacity, you know, we'll add some folks and do what we need to do on the, on the lab side. You know, we've already put those plans together, Dave Shimana, the director of the lab, and I.
Right. So everything's still, all of our tests are still being sent to BI?
Yes, very few are being sent to Quest.
Okay, so that's sort of our overflow valve, is Quest.
Yes.
Wow.
So I would, I, my recommend is to keep it on the agenda. We'll continue to work this hard as an item, and, and certainly give the, the Board an update at every meeting.
Anything else regarding testing? Okay.
Just, you know, Paul, just one, one other thing. I would say that what we're, what we're also talking about is, you know, what, what does testing look like in the fall? What does it look like, you know, in the winter? Right now, it is a very segregated, singular sort of task or function that's being done by a defined group of people. You know, at what point could we move it to, back to operations? What does that look like? You know, I don't think we'll ever get to the point where we'll do it in all physician offices, because there needs to be personal protective equipment and some environmental controls in those exam rooms where it's done. So, but we are raising the possibility of what, what does testing in general look like over the summer, and especially as we get into the fall.
You know, the other question I had, and I don't, I don't know if Ruth would be the one to answer this, was at our last meeting, we were thinking that perhaps we could, or we should think about start testing everybody in congregate-living facilities. And so I'm guessing, because we're not at that level yet, Barb, we can't do that?
Right, but we're planning on it. What we're trying to do is develop, you know, a, a list of those settings, how many people live in each of them, how would we logistically do it if we got to that point? So when we get a green light for something, we don't have to start at ground zero. We've already put the plan together that we could execute in a short amount of time.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Anything else regarding COVID-19 testing from either board? Okay, hearing none. Let's go on to letter E, considerations, consideration of current or additional restrictions relating to COVID-19 enforcement of state and local orders and restrictions.
The Chair, the Board did get a request in relating to potential mask requirement at the transfer station.
Okay.
Thing the Boards want to consider.
Okay. Let's, Dr. Wedmore, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I had asked that the enforcement of state and local orders be put on the agenda, because I'm a little at loose ends as far as how this comes to reality when push comes to shove. Last meeting, for example, Bruce said he was looking down bare-skinned neck. About 95% of people had masks on, which was great, but social distancing was certainly wanting, and he decided, as an individual, not to go down there. So just put that in your hatband for a minute. Now, the federal government has put out some guidelines, and they defer to the states for enforcement. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has put out guidelines. But when all is said and done, they defer, defer to the local boards of health for enforcement. Now that gets us back to Bruce's observation. If there is a circumstance, whether it's at the beach, or at a swimming pole, or any number of people, circumstances where there's a lot of people whose proximity makes transmission a risk above and beyond what we're doing. How do we enforce that? Do we, I, I don't know how we do it. And that's what I have put it on for a discussion from the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health. Do we call the police? Do we walk away? Or do we put it on the agenda for the next meeting where we can wring our hands and say how bad it was? So I open it up for your opinions, because I don't know how to do this as a local Board of Health member.
Well, it's certainly something that we can discuss in this, let's do it right now. Selectman Donnelly?
Yeah, there was a report of.
Yeah, there was, um, a report of overcrowding at a beach in Beverly and the police were called and people were, the beach was cleared. Um, and there are guidelines in the state, um, information on COVID about how far away you should be. And it's not six feet, it's 12 feet on beaches. So, um, you know, I think if we have an overcrowded beach, it's certainly within our right to call the police and have the beach cleared. Mitch, we were going to say something.
I was just going to say that, that what we're doing now is that the police are handling that, that piece of enforcement. When there's something specific that requires, um, some more detailed involvement, they escalate it to, 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 um, to John Coulon. But for the clearing the beaches, for the overcrowding on Bear Skin Neck, I would suggest that you, you give the police department a call and let them know they have extra people on, on the weekends particularly to address that. And on their end, it, it's part of their normal course of business, doing their best to keep the crowd, um, down, reminding people about their masks. So for them, it's a, a standard part of business. So if, if there are concerns about crowds in any specific spot, it would be important to, uh, notify the police for that.
Mitch, what is the signage at the beaches like? Is there any way to improve that and make it really clear um, about what the, uh, social distancing guidelines are?
Actually in the process of redoing the signs there. So we had temporary ones up. Now that it's beach season, we're in the process of working with the vendor to get, um, semi-permanent ones at all the beaches. So we expect that'll, those will probably be in place over the next week or so. Highlighting all of the requirements from, uh, the state on the distances, distancing, you need to keep masks, et cetera. So that's a work in process right now.
Okay. I want to go back to Paul. Um, there have been, I, I think we should, the way we did for the downtown district, enforce a requirement for face coverings at the transfer station. Let's see, that's a place where people, you know, do come into contact with each other. Um, the couple of times I've been up there, people have been respectful. But again, it's my concern as we move, um, far, further into the summer and more people are there. Uh, I think that's a potential spot to address Sid's concern about gathering places. So, uh, I'd like to hear other folks' opinion about whether they feel mandatory face coverings at the transfer station makes sense.
Who would like to chime in on this? Uh, select, selectman Donling?
Oh, uh, Sydney, did you want to speak?
Oh, yeah, I just, um, I do feel that it's important just because the transfer station especially. Um, you know, when Bruce looked down at Bear Skin Neck, he had the option of not going down Bear Skin Neck. But a lot of people don't have the option of not going to the transfer station. So I think that's, um, that's, um, something that most definitely we need, we really need to keep, um, everyone feeling very safe. The only other thing I wanted to add again about the beaches and the crowding, um, again, just considering, um, the parking situation. Because, um, uh, if there is a lot of parking, of course, you're going to have more out of towners going to the beaches if they are opened up. Um, I don't know, um, I don't believe that they're opened up to tourists yet. Um, but if they are, you know, just thinking really hard about the parking situation, I think that's kind of, um, a way that you can control the population, um, at least at some of the beaches. And then the other thing is, you know, again, Bear Skin Neck is one of these really vulnerable kind of areas. And, um, just the idea of perhaps having at the, before you enter Bear Skin Neck, having, um, this, of course, this is up to the police, but having a policeman there to make sure that people who are entering Bear Skin Neck are actually wearing masks because, um, again, it's a place that's really, um, very difficult, uh, to maintain social distancing. So those were just my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you. So it, is it, uh, Dr. Newman?
Yeah, I, I was just going to say that I agree. I think that, um, they've separated the cars and limited the number of cars driving into the transfer station. But if there are a number of people all trying to get to the, uh, the dumpster where the paper or the plastics, whatever, are being, uh, disposed of, it's not unusual for people to bunch up. And I think most people are observing social distancing, but when I was there, not everybody was. I had to stay back and give people who were crowding a chance to, uh, you know, to separate. So I agree with that. And I just have one other question really. Mitch, you mentioned that, uh, the police are just sort of enforcing these guidelines as a matter of course. But do they, do they have, uh, as a matter of course, the ability to actually close down, uh, Bear Skin Neck? I mean, I can envision, I haven't noticed it as yet, but if it gets really busy on a beautiful day, can they do there what the police in Beverly did on the beach? Can they basically say, um, you know, residents only, you know, people are here for a reason only? Do they have that discretion and do they know it?
So they don't have the discretion to, to do a closure like that on Bear Skin Neck? If the issue did come up, um, you know, the chief would, would reach out and we'd look to have an emergency meeting of, of one or both of these boards to have that type of closure come up. I would not say it's within their, their ability to make that type of closure. You know, they deal with the crowds and, and, you know, move people along. But I would say they wouldn't be able to say, oh, you know, no one else going up into this area without, um, a vote.
Okay.
I, I just don't know how effective going up to individuals would be if it got to be very crowded, which could, it could get.
Uh, Sarah?
Yeah, um, I think that at this point, I think that making masks required at the transfer station makes sense for exactly what Dr. Jimenez said. You know, residents, we've, we've gotten complaints basically that residents didn't feel safe using a town service. So I think we, we don't really have a choice there. I think my experience of the dump at this point has been almost full compliance. So hopefully that may, you know, requirement will push us to full compliance. But I think in terms of the beaches, at this point with things reopening, you know, I think we just have to push the education, push the science. A lot of this is personal responsibility. And, um, you know, obviously the police are doing what we can, but we don't have a huge police department. You know, we can't cover every beach all the time and the neck and all, you know, on weekends. So I think we have to do our best, but I think new signage can help. And just, you know, education and I can, I'll update more when we get to the reopening committee on kind of some educational things that we're doing. But I do agree that making the transfer station masks required because I think looking at summer and it getting busier and the fact that we aren't opening on Sundays there. So I think that will be helpful.
So we're looking, uh, possibly to mirror the same requirements that we have downtown to, to be also applied at the transfer station.
I'm happy to make a motion that we, uh, require face coverings at the transfer station, um, at all times.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second then.
Moved in second and roll call vote. Uh, talk to Jimenez. Oh, I'm sorry, good.
Yeah, just, just, just some discussion on that.
Sure, of course.
When Mitch makes his, uh, Monday night calls, I think it, it would be very useful to stress that the reason the health boards of the world are requiring masks is not to protect the wearer, but as an exercise of good citizenship to try to protect the people who are around you if you are asymptomatic and not wearing a mask and potentially infecting that person. I think there's confusion in that many people figure a mask protects themselves. And if you don't wear a mask, maybe you're a little bit more macho. That's not the reason that we're doing it. It's to protect others. It's an exercise of good citizenship.
So in my call past Monday, based on the previous Thursday's feedback, I did include a very specific comment on, uh, we're wearing it because of the number of asymptomatic individuals. Uh, I'll continue to stress that point.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Let's start with the board of health. Uh, Dr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Dr. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yeah.
Dr. Wedmore?
Yes.
Uh, selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Donling?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
And selectman Murphy votes aye and the motion passes. Thank you.
Paul?
Yes.
Before we leave that, um, discussion, because we've been talking a lot about Bear Skin Neck. Um, and you know, like, uh, Sadie said, controlling the amount of parking at beaches is going to be a good way this summer to, to do that. And so I'm wondering, Sarah, and I don't know who else on this call is on the reopening committee, maybe Barb, but has there been any discussion about limiting further the parking downtown for tourists? To sort of, um, ramp down the number of people?
Not, not yet, but, um, I'll report after, but some of our next steps in, we're looking at ways to, to boost, uh, to maybe increase space for restaurants, which could actually potentially involve cutting down on some parking.
And is there, is there plans to like make, you know, say the parking? So at Long Beach, a resident on a beautiful Sunday afternoon, that parking lot is filled with residents only. But is there a way to make that parking lot half capacity?
Uh, I, I think that we would get, um, I, I hesitate to say this, but I, I think that for the residents of town to limit, I, I think that the residents have been waiting for the beaches to open. So I think to like put that at, we haven't discussed that, but I will say that my guess is that the feedback we get, would get for doing something like that with limiting resident parking would be overwhelmingly negative. When the governor is like pushing people to get, you know, air and exercise, that's just my personal.
Yeah, I'm just trying to imagine Long Beach at high tide on a, you know, 80 degrees Saturday in July. And it's bad in normal times. I just, I don't know how people can socially distance at high tide. I mean, even if it was tide dependent, you know, like if it's going to be a high tide in the middle of the day and then as the tide goes out, you can let more people park there. I don't know how it would happen. But I think Sadie's idea of trying to really limit the parking at all these hotspots makes sense.
Okay. Selectman Donling?
Yeah, so may I think about definitely.
Selectman Donling, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Dr. Wedmore?
Just a question. Right now, um, do we have a ruling that says people will have to wear a mask on the beach? Uh, does that come under the governor's, uh, if unable to do social distancing, you will wear a mask?
Comes under the governor's.
So Mitch, so right now, if somebody's on the, if somebody observes a large group of, say, kids on the beach without masks and not 12 feet apart, your suggestion would be to call the police and have the police clear that beach?
No.
No, so you should call the police and they'll respond appropriately. So they'll, they'll judge whether do they need to just approach that crowd and say, you need to put your masks on, or if they need to disperse it depending on what they encounter. But, um, call them and they'll, they'll take the appropriate action from there.
You know, because the other thing too, that I, I walk the dogs. I just actually came back from a dog walk up at Steel and there were pretty much every afternoon, large groups of kids up at Steel, um, jumping in the quarry. And that's supposed to be private, but, um, there's no social distancing. There's no masks. There's, you know.
Right. I, I would, just to chime in, I will say that like we don't, the police can only do so much because I, obviously on weekends, like I get text messages, Facebook messages, send the, you know, send the police here, send the police. And we don't have a big police force. So like, I mean, I would, I always say to people, call the police, they'll respond appropriately. But I don't, I just, I don't want people to be under the false impression that like, if you're halfway down Long Beach and, you know, see a big group of kids and call the police, that 30 seconds later, you're going to see like, you know, blue flashing lights kind of fly in. Because I think it's going to be one of those things that if there's a police, if there's a cruiser in the area and there is an emergency, isn't an emergency going on, my guess is that they'll respond appropriately. But I just don't want people to be under false hope that like the police are going to have a lot of time to like be breaking up groups of kids. I, I wish that they would have more time, but we don't have that kind of police force. I mean, Mitch, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
So we're, we're continuing to adjust the staffing as needed to make sure we have coverage. But, um, yeah, there, I believe it as call them and they'll respond appropriately.
Okay.
I mean, there will be lifeguards soon. Will the lifeguards have a role?
No, they, they will be reported to the police.
Okay, so that's good. That's good for everyone to know as well.
Good. Mr. Chairman? I think it might be helpful also if, uh, the lifeguards and their, uh, kit, uh, would have, uh, extra masks for people.
Yeah, we'll, we'll provide those. They won't be, um, actively monitoring that piece.
No, no, but if someone.
Need them on the water, looking at the water, but, um, they'll certainly have them with them if they're, if there's.
Good. Yep. No, that's good. Mr. Chairman?
I think Dawn's trying to talk.
Oh, go ahead, Dawn.
I'm sorry, can you guys hear me okay? I just want to make sure I'm in a little bit of a dead spot here. I want to make sure I'm okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, all right, good. Um, I, I, I think that the, the, um, transfer station, uh, requirement is prudent. I, I would agree with that. I think I, I would caution us to be careful that, you know, people's feelings of safety is not what we should be dealing with. It should be what's actually safe. And I think at the transfer station, that's correct. Um, I think we run into the problem and we have, we've seen it all over town pretty much from Allen Point to downtown to the beaches, um, that there will always be pockets of people, whether it be kids or adults who, who don't want to observe the social norms that, that we, they should be right now. So I just want to be careful that we don't over-regulate something that doesn't, that shouldn't be there. I mean, we have to put some faith in people. Unfortunately, sometimes that faith falls by the wayside. Um, but I want, as elected town officials and appointed town officials, we, we should be going again, I say on, on facts and figures, not on feelings and emotions. So I, and I think we, we're doing that. I think everything is pointing in that direction. And I think that's fine, but I just want to be careful about, you know, the, having people, people should call the police. That's how it should go and that's fine, but we've seen by the emails that have come in through the board that it, people kind of take on that role of being a police officer themselves and feel that they, they should be empowered to do something when they shouldn't. So I just want to be careful, I guess is my point.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Let's, uh, go to, uh, letter F, uh, Denmark and other living facilities update. Um, who's got that? Mitch, do, does that?
Yes, she does, Mr. Chair. She is now unmuted.
Is she? Go ahead.
Um, not, no new information to share about Denmark. Things are stable. Um, no new, no new information.
Well, that's a good thing.
Yeah, it is a good thing.
That's good. That's positive. Okay. Uh, town administrator?
Mr. Chair, Dr. Newman has.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dr. Newman.
Yeah, if I could just, uh, share a few things. You know, we'd be kept well informed by chassis in terms of what's been going on in Denmark, Denmark. And luckily things have settled down there. I don't know if people saw the article, I think it was on the front page of the Globe today, that said that within Massachusetts, there were 80 nursing homes that had at least 20 deaths attributable to the COVID virus.
I didn't hear that.
You know, as bad as our situation is, uh, you know, we're, we're not unique. Also by coincidence, just today, uh, in the latest issue of the New England Journal of Medicine, it was a study of, um, the spread of the virus through a skilled nursing facility, nursing home in the state of Washington. And some interesting things, uh, you know, came out in that study. The, the virus was initially brought into that facility by. The, the virus was initially brought into that facility by a staff member, by a worker. And fairly quickly, it spread throughout the population. Within 23 days of the first positive test, 64% of the residents were positive. And more than half of those, 56%, were asymptomatic. Another interesting piece of information actually from an editorial that accompanied that was they found that the majority of workers, caretakers, who became sick with the COVID virus went to work feeling unwell. They went in with symptoms. So people were not staying home as directed when they felt sick. And in the end, there was a very high death rate. Most of the people who, who were asymptomatic became symptomatic. And I can't remember exactly how many people of the 27 who were asymptomatic died. That was quite a large number. And I think the bottom line was that it was felt that measures that depend on cohorting people based on symptoms, that is separating symptomatic from asymptomatic nursing home residents will not be effective. That really, the only way to control an epidemic is to test, 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 you know, test frequently, whether you're symptomatic or asymptomatic, whether you're a resident or a worker, you just need more ongoing testing. In the, the editorial, that was the feeling of the, of the authors. One of the points they made was that short of testing like that, the only thing one could do would be to remove residents from the nursing home. So, you know, my concern is with what's going to happen if we have another surge. It looks as if this past wave of infections is receding. And hopefully we won't have much more illness and death. But I, I think it would be useful to have a plan in place should this happen, you know, again. And I spoke to, Chassie connected me with her contacts at the DPH. And I spoke with one of the nurses there. And they were interested in organizing meeting perhaps with representatives of the administration of Denmark, of DPH staff and and representatives at the town to kind of review what's going on there now, what they've been doing. And I asked them, what can we do to help? And so, again, mostly with an eye toward preventing this from happening again in the future. So that's really my update. And if anybody is interested in being involved in one of those meetings, just let me know and I'll keep people informed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newman.
Could I ask if, if the article or if anybody has any information, I'm just curious about these asymptomatic people. If there's been any studies that they are in any way less infectious than somebody who has symptoms or, or is, or do we just not know yet?
I, I think the answer is no. I think most of the asymptomatic patients, at least in the nursing home, they might be different from the people on the street, were really pre-symptomatic. That is, they found that for up to six days before people got sick, they were shedding the virus and had positive tests for six days before they became sick. And they, and some of them remained positive more than a week after they, after they developed symptoms. So the period of shedding virus is quite long in many of these cases. So.
And I hear you say it was.
It's also important, I, their studies aren't exact, but the range of the percentage of infections that occur from asymptomatic people I'm seeing is from 30 to 50%. So this disease is being spread by people who have no idea that they're ill. And that's, to me, that's an incredible cautionary note. As we begin to open up and people feel that they can expand their activities, this disease is spread by people who feel, who don't have any symptoms and feel they're not ill. That's an important reminder that I think we need to reinforce.
You know, Bruce, would you, this is Barb, would you mind doing a little bit of epidemiology on R0 and what that means for COVID versus say measles or Ebola or something like that? I think that's important as well, that the transmissibility to someone else is higher than I think folks think.
Sure. Why don't I save that for, I keep everybody with bated breath for our next meeting?
Sounds good.
I'm happy to talk about R0.
Can I just, can I just give one, just one comment? It is very interesting, just a little bit of personal experience. I have had patients who have been completely asymptomatic. And they've undergone CT scan for, for example, cancer screenings, that kind of thing. And they've shown up, they've, we've known that they're COVID positive by their lung findings. So, you know, it's just kind of interesting because these patients are quote unquote asymptomatic. But if you look at their lungs, their lungs are very symptomatic. So they're not having symptoms, but if you actually look at their lungs, you can see airspace opacities. And so you can imagine why these asymptomatic patients are so contagious. So, so I just want to put that out there because I think it does give some perspective.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? For comment? Okay, hearing none, let's go on to our next agenda item and that's the Town Administrator slash Incident Command Updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are in ongoing work with, as I indicated, some signage updates. Continuing to prepare for phase reopenings in general areas. We're in the process now of buying the appropriate material. And everything that we need on that front. So that continues to, to go along. We're making sure we have the appropriate number of masks, gloves, sanitizer, et cetera. We're also preparing for the upcoming election on June 30th. We are making sure that we have the appropriate materials and PPE available for the poll workers. We're still waiting to hear back from the state on their willingness to move forward with any legislation for shortening the poll hours. Recent conversations with the Senator and the Representative indicated that they might seek to do something after the fact, which would basically ratify the fact that it was less hours, but we're still fleshing that out. Certainly things are also still topsy-turvy on their end. So more to come, but we are still actively working on legislation in that process to reduce the hours that the polls are open. When they are open though, we will certainly be sure that all the, all the workers have all the gear that they need. That we have the appropriate staff in place for constant sanitizing. And that everybody who comes in will have a safe environment, whether it's, you know, giving them a set of gloves, giving them a clean pen, et cetera, as we go through, we will have those procedures in place where focusing very much on that now. So that we're ready when the time comes. Other than that, nothing else. In addition to what was reported Tuesday, we continue to run the marathon.
Thank you, Mitch. Thank you for the update. Let's continue on. Letter I, Health Agent, Health Inspectors and Health Nurses Updates. Does anyone from the Board of Health have any additional updates?
Do you want to do H or I, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry?
Did you want to do H or I, Mr. Chair? Which one?
Let's do H. Updates. What is Selectman Updates or Board of Health Updates? Anyone? Sarah?
Sure. Should I do the reopening committee update?
That sounds good. Please.
Barbara, Barbara, you still on the call as well?
Uh, yeah, I am.
Okay. You want me to start and then end with you and your document?
Uh, yeah, thanks. I'd appreciate. I'm back and forth with a couple of phone calls here. Sorry.
No worries and don't, no, no worries. Um, so the reopening committee continues to meet. We meet, we've met several times. We're meeting a few times a week. We have on the town website, we created a document which we discussed and it's live for all businesses to, a kind of a guide to reopening with links to all of the state guidelines and local. And I believe that several businesses have already submitted their plans, which the Board of Health voted in last week for, to require just businesses to submit. There's no approval process. They just have to submit their state plans to the town so we can have them on file and have a contact. So Mitch, I believe you said that several have submitted.
Yes, and thank you. That's a reminder to a request from Tuesday. Kelsey's in the process of making sure that everything is squared away with those and she'll be sharing with Board of Health and Board of Selectmen a digital folder for each. So one for the food ones that have been submitted, one for the reopening plans that have been submitted so that the board members can all review what's been, what's been provided. So you'll be getting an email invite from her in the next few days, probably beginning of next week, that you can access all of the submitted plans.
Great, thanks. And we are, for an anticipation for this weekend, we're finalizing a know before you go document that will be shared out to several mailing lists and posted to the town website, just kind of like what the hours of the bathrooms are, what businesses are open, just some info, you know, some information, parking information. And we are starting tomorrow discussing kind of supporting restaurants. We've had a few restaurants as we've seen in other communities as the guidelines in the next few days come out for the next phase of restaurant reopening, which I, we assume will incorporate either some in-restaurant or outdoor dining, how we can best support restaurants and maybe increase the dining area. So we're looking at that in terms of two different kind of areas. The first is to increase the outdoor dining space for individual restaurants. So kind of looking at each restaurant individually and how looking at their outdoor space, whether it's public or private, how we can help to maybe supplement their current dining. And that could involve, because you can't block sidewalks, so that may involve taking some parking spaces or some adjacent spaces. That could also involve maybe some tweaks to our alcohol licensing, which would go to the Board of Selectmen and then the dining will go to the Board of Health. And then the second thing we're looking at is increasing space outdoors for people to eat takeout food. And that would not involve alcohol. I know some, there have been some ideas thrown out there like, oh, if we, if we loosen the alcohol laws and people could get takeout, we'd love for people to get takeout, but, but we can't loosen the alcohol laws enough to make the whole downtown area open container. The police chief.
That would be against the law.
Yeah, that's a no-go. But, but we've, we're throwing around ideas of maybe increasing, you know, adding folding tables, picnic tables to all different areas. So if people get takeout, they have places, you know, safe places to go eat. So we're looking at that. And then our plan was for the reopening committee to come up with a proposal and then to bring it to both of these boards together for your, for our consideration. So that as the guidelines come out, you know, to kind of keep things streamlined, that the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health aren't kind of looking at the whole set so that you can come up, look at a proposal that's set from the reopening committee. And then our other, oh, and Barb is working, has created a document that's really helpful, that is kind of in draft form. And Barb, if you're free, I'll let you mention that, discuss that.
I am. We created what we're, you know, calling right now, we'll have to rename it, but it's a business Q and A. And it essentially helps any business owner, employee or manager, answer the question that starts out with a customer asking an employee, is there anyone with COVID working here? And how do you go through that list of questions and, and what do you give as an answer? So that you sound like you know what the answer is and that you're telling folks the truth and that you have something to say that is, has been sort of worked out in advance. So Teresa and Chassie and I worked on draft one and two and then tossed it out to the reopening committee for draft three and four. And we'll present probably a final draft or a final document to our meeting tomorrow and get that in the hands of business owners.
Yeah, so we're basically just trying to support business owners and anything they could need or, or use as a resource in reopening. So if anyone on either of these boards has any suggestions, you can reach out to us as well or shoot us an email, anything that you think could be helpful. I know Dr. Cohen has shared some documents. I was going to go through those again and see what could be helpful to share with the business community. Because people really are craving kind of good, solid, summarized resources. Because, you know, business owners are being thrown a lot of information from a lot of different directions. So we're trying to streamline and get them kind of concisely and efficiently what they, what they need in terms of reopening, because it can be overwhelming, especially with things changing by the day.
Agreed. Uh, Dr. Wedmore?
I will, I will send you the final document when we get it hopefully finalized tomorrow at our meeting. I will send it to the board members.
Thank you. Dr. Wedmore?
Just a question. On bearskin neck, many of the shops are pretty small and what, one of the things you want to try to do is limit the number of people in the shop because of the small area. There is a bylaw, I believe, which prohibits shop owners from putting stuff outside of their shop.
Right.
And is that something that the opening committee could think about rescinding for a period of time so that you don't have all of the people who want to look in the shops, having to go into the shops to look at the merchandise?
Yeah, that was actually on my list to mention as well. Thanks for, for bringing that up. So before, that's probably an early, we're dealing with the restaurants kind of ASAP because that could involve some infrastructure changes. And then early next week, at the latest, we're going to look at how we can support the retail shops in coming up with something consistent and across the board. Similar to how the Selectmen, every year we give out outdoor display permits. But this year, instead of doing those, we would come up with something uniform that every business could do, basically. You know, whether, whether your space is, is private space or public space. But to a little bit of outdoor space, we'll bring a proposal of that, that as well.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Anything else?
Quick, quick question, quick question, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Okay, so Sarah, I, I was intrigued by what you said a second ago about the outdoor dining and potential spaces, things like that. I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear it a little more, if you don't mind, if you could just go over it one more time. Because I think with that, there's also opportunity for the long term, obviously non-COVID related to, you know, maybe change things up a little bit. And I don't know if, you know, that would obviously take a lot of other board input and what have you, but I'm, I'm really intrigued by that.
Yeah, I mean, like with so many things in life, I wouldn't be surprised if a lot of the changes we make now to kind of react to COVID end up being changes that stick. You know, similarly to how a lot of companies are gonna, you know, end up work with employees working from home for, for good. I wouldn't be surprised if some of the, some of the changes end up, you know, changing things permanently. So we'll see. I know that the police chief is hard at work, looking at some, kind of looking at space downtown and kind of taking a a big picture look at things and some regulations. And then we've all been kind of racking our brains for, for ideas. So we're kind of at the early stages, but obviously any, any ideas we have and proposals come to the, come to these two boards. So we hope to do that really soon before the restaurant stuff, before they're allowed to, to open outside and then the retail before they're allowed customers in the stores.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. But it could be really cool.
Yeah, this is Barb. Just one final comment. We're, we're also feeling shamelessly. So as we're reading literature and reading different sources and we're finding things that seem like they might work for Rockport, we're picking those out and bringing those up at our group as well. So making sure that we're gathering all good ideas.
Great. Great. Thank you, Barb. Any, anyone else want to chime in?
Uh, yeah, Paul, I've got a data report.
Okay.
Okay. So right ahead, Dr. Cohen.
Okay, let me see if I can bring it up here. Can folks see this? See the slides?
Yep.
Great. So we put together, I've got to thank my co-authors, Brianna Burnham, who's an NPH candidate, and Chassie. We're going to start reporting in more detail about Rockport data. So the first slide here just looks at the cumulative number of confirmed cases. These are just confirmed cases. We're not including, there are a few suspect cases and probable cases. But for this report, we're looking, we're looking at the daily trends. And you can see, fortunately, the trends have leveled off for the last several weeks after the 17 case report related to Denmark. Chassie and Brianna, at any point, if you want to interject, feel free. And thank you both very much. This slide compares Rockport and Massachusetts in terms of COVID outcomes. Rockport has had 14 deaths from COVID, 12 of which are related to Denmark. We've had, this is based on cases up through the 25th, 75 cases where there are 53% are currently active and 28% have recovered. You can see the mortality rate in Rockport, again, fueled by Denmark, is substantially higher than the Massachusetts mortality. Looking by gender, about 50/50 in terms of male, female. Both in Rockport, slightly higher proportion of females in Massachusetts. This is the age breakdown, where Rockport is substantially different than the state as a whole. In Massachusetts, about one out of four COVID cases is over the age of 70. Again, in Rockport, 43% are over 70. In Massachusetts, almost half of the COVID cases are under 50. Whereas in Rockport, only about 1 in 7 cases, 14%, are under the age of 50. Hospitalizations, we have, of the known hospital status, 29% are, 12 out of 41 cases in Rockport have been hospitalized. 71% of the Rockport cases did not require hospitalization. Throughout Massachusetts, the proportion that required hospitalization was, has been much smaller, at about 3%. So I think, given the age structure and the cluster in Denmark, it's understandable why a larger proportion of COVID cases required hospitalization in our community. This is looking the pie on the left at cases with underlying health conditions. The majority, 60%, are still under investigation to determine if underlying health conditions precipitated the COVID or related to COVID. For what we know about half of the COVID cases had underlying conditions. And the pie on the right, that focuses on hospitalizations with underlying conditions. And again, the number of, proportion of hospitalizations and non-hospitalized cases had similar proportions of underlying conditions. Healthcare workers, this is not Denmark healthcare workers. Rockport is blessed with having a lot of folks who are in the healthcare sector. And this represents occupational information from the DPH infectious disease registry. 20% of the cases in Rockport are among healthcare workers. And in terms of healthcare workers, half have recovered and half are still active cases. Chassie, did I get that right?
Yes, you did.
Congregate settings, again, clearly half of our cases in Massachusetts, excuse me, in Rockport are residents in long-term care facilities. And half are COVID cases are community-based. And in terms of congregates setting outcomes, slightly over half of the cases have died. So these, we thought this would be a good fundamental overview, a foundation for this week. And in future weeks, we'll be presenting other data that Chassie and Brianna will help organize and pull. Chassie has reached out to the other communities on Cape Ann and we hope to get them on board with having data not only on Rockport, but Cape Ann-wide data. Since I think that's a really important context for us to look at the data and think about policies moving forward so that we're consistent with our neighboring communities. Next week, I think we're going to try to just focus on cases that arise in the community rather than mixing both the Denmark, Denmark and community-based cases. Brianna and Chassie, do you have anything to add right now before I open up to other discussion?
No, I don't.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, that was very helpful.
So this is Barb, I have a question. I thought, one of the staffs was fascinating, Bruce, and I had not heard this before. If 50% of our cases in Rockport are Denmark and 25% are healthcare workers, that, that's interesting to me. So I need to think about that for a minute.
Yes, I think there are nurses and physicians and ancillary healthcare personnel who live in Rockport who may have had exposure and became cases. I think that's what's going on.
So when you take Denmark out of the mix and you potentially take those healthcare workers out of the mix, let's, let's make an assumption they might have been infected at work, maybe not, maybe home or not. It leaves a really small number of people who are community-based, general community-based residents.
Well, if you look at this slide, it's not, it's only 20% are healthcare workers. It's 15 persons out of the 75, so.
All right, yeah, I don't have the slide, so.
I'm sorry. So 80% are non-healthcare workers, but 15, 20% are healthcare workers, which is, for one occupation, a pretty substantial group, but it's not 50/50. It's healthcare workers, of the healthcare workers, half are recovered and half are still active cases. But I think, you know, I think this does highlight to some extent the exposures that healthcare personnel have had. Mitch, do you think it would be helpful to just put these slides up on our website?
Yes, so if you just send me the latest from today, I will have them put up tomorrow morning on the COVID alerts page.
Okay.
Our stats. Thank you, Bruce. All right. Any comments from either board? Okay, hearing none. Do we have any updates from, or additional updates from health agents, health inspectors, or health nurses? Anyone want to comment?
I think John Coulon is on now, I saw him on a minute ago.
I am.
John, do you have any update for, for the both boards?
Well, not much, considering we met and reported out five days ago.
Yeah.
I approached three more food establishments today. And I, I will be visiting others this coming Monday. I have responded to a couple of potential non-compliance complaints and reported findings of compliance at the time of my inspection to town administrator. And the Board of Health Administrative Assistant is keeping in touch with the town food establishments, making sure that, that they understand what they need to do in order to get a pre-opening inspection. And I've had it expressed to me that they very much appreciate being reached out to. And some folks appreciate the reminder and the assistance at fashioning a written plan that we are requiring of folks. I've been reviewing the written plans being submitted, not only for the food establishments, but for the non-food establishments as well. And there is a template provided at the, that, that we are providing to people in the community that originated at the state level. And it's very efficient, check off the appropriate boxes, fill in the appropriate blanks. It makes it a lot easier, so you don't have to start from, from nothing. So I think it's, I think it's going fairly well, all, from my perspective. But certainly, I'd like to, to express that folks on the ground, in the shops, on the street, are expressing to me their difficulties. Wanted to make sure that the Selectmen and the Board of Health members understand the, the really difficult time folks are having. And I, I do tell them that, yes, I, I do get that impression in a very strong way that folks are not making decisions from some hidden location without any understanding of what it's like to try to conduct yourself in a beautiful seaside community in the midst of a global pandemic. And all that means for, in terms of putting food on the table and paying the rent and looking to whether you're going to be able to stay in business for a season or, or not. It appears that some folks are deciding to not open for the, the season. And other folks wondering just how they're going to be able to make it through the, this coming season that they depend upon so much every summer. I certainly don't have answers for folks. And I, I try to remind them that the people on the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health are looking to make decisions based on the same foundation of science, built of data that we are all looking at when we look at the reports being given at the local, state and federal levels. So I'm trying to be consistent in that, with that message. It does not put food on anyone's table, does not ring in any sales for anyone. And, and sometimes I may fall short of convincing people that we are trying to do the right thing for as many people as possible. So if you have any magic words of wisdom that I can impart, just let me know.
Thank you, John. It's a difficult situation all the way around. And again, that's why we've increased these meetings to twice a week because this is ever-changing, this pandemic situation. I can assure you that, assure everyone how seriously both boards take this situation. And we will continue to do our very best to make sure we're protecting people. And also, we recognize fully that there are business people here trying to make a living. And it's, we, we take it very, very seriously. So, thank you. Anyone want to add anything or? Okay. Anything else for, for updates from either board? Leslie?
Paul, I have a very brief update. We are out straight with requests for information and inspections, not only for suspect systems, but also housing and nuisance complaints. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Leslie. Okay, last item on the agenda is public comment. And like we've been doing the last couple of weeks, Mitch will announce who it is. I ask you to direct the questions to me as chairperson and as well as, please state your name and your address. And we look forward to hearing from people. Okay, Mitch, do your math. Please raise your hand or use the hand raise function if you wish to speak. Kate, you just need to unmute yourself and then name and address.
Kate Cahill, 3 Mount Pleasant Street. Is there a plan for consistency in the public restrooms? Because they were open the last few days, but they were not open today. And I didn't, what the, did I miss something?
Nope, there will be periodic closures to make sure that they have what they need. They needed to do a little bit of work as well. So, correct, correct. Have other work they have to do in these facilities to get them going as well, on the plumbing end, on the HVAC end. So they'll be open, aside from the one-off days that they may need to do some repairs, which is pretty normal. So they'll be back, the plan is that they'll be back open and functioning on reduced hours, but pretty much back to normal.
Okay, are they planning on going to longer hours at some point?
At some point, but we're not there yet.
Okay. Also, my second question is, this decision has probably already been made, is there going to be a trolley this summer? Because if you're talking cutting back on parking places, where are people going to go? And it just, I know it's a big can of worms.
So there hasn't been any decision made on the trolley yet. We've let Kate know that as the budget's being sorted out, that's still a question mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, Mr. Chair, up next, B and L T I C S. Just need to unmute yourself and name and address, please.
Yes, Judd Coonley, 12 Bearskin Neck, Green Leaf Cafe and the Ice Cream Store. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Chair. One kind of observation, I know the Code Red goes out every Monday. With kind of Tuesday being the primary meeting of the Board of Selectmen, it's kind of hard to have new changes and, and different ordinances either added or subtracted during this time and then not get that information on a Code Red until the following Monday. Possible recommendation or thought would maybe be to add that Code Red, switch the time from Monday over to Wednesday, so it would be the day following all these changes. So people wouldn't have to wait for that pertinent information, you know, six days. Just a thought for everyone to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Judd. Okay, next, Amy, just need to unmute yourself and then name and, please.
Hi, this is Amy Thagerland, 53 Main Street. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a suggestion and a question for you all. One would just be, I know that you guys have been getting inundated with emails from the community, but it would be nice if there was a confirmation of receipt of emails just saying, hey, we received this. It hasn't gone into a black hole and we'll be in touch with you if deemed necessary, what have you. And then my question is, have you, anyone on either board's been in touch with comparable towns, coastal communities, tourist towns, beachside communities about their policies and how they are moving forward with this?
Thank you. Mitch, dude, we, we constantly in contact with other communities. Yes, yeah, we have regular, especially North Shore. The administrators have regular conversations about what everybody's doing and.
conversations about what everybody's doing and brainstorming. Certainly, the police do as well on their end, community engagement does on their end, regularly having conversations, and everybody's picking everybody's brain for best practices.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Yeah, and just to add in, the reopening committee is looking at communities around us. And actually, some of the information we're we're using and resources are from communities like all over the country, places all over the country. So we're we're constantly looking at other other communities.
Good. Excellent. Thank you. Next, Mitch?
Anybody else wishing to speak? Please use the hand raise function, or please raise your hand in the video. Please raise your hand. Okay, I'm going to go to the phone lines. Anybody wishes to speak, if you called in, we have those lines open. Please speak now.
Yes, Dan and Helene Duffy, 55 Broadway. And what we're wondering is, if you've given some thought to reopening the tennis courts on Story Street and Long Beach for the general public?
I'm glad Dan mentioned this. I said in our reopening committee that I wouldn't. I totally dropped it off my list. So Dan, thanks for mentioning it.
That's fine.
We did discuss at our last meeting with our superintendent of schools and what that would look like, but we haven't made any decisions.
Well, no, Dan was actually asking about the non-school tennis court. So it may be for us to add to our next agenda as we look at what the state has done, because it appears that maybe some state stuff has opened up. So I think we should add that to our next agenda.
Yeah, let's let's plan on adding that.
We address those typically under the current or additional restrictions.
Perfect. Okay, we can do that.
A wider area, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
We have one more hand up, I believe, Carol Cook. Do you have your hand up?
I get to, I have had it up for about four times, but I guess you
Name and address, please.
Carol Cook, 111 Tetch Road, Rockport. First of all, I want to thank the Board of Health. This is the first time I've had a chance to attend your meetings, and I'm so impressed with all the work you do and your your level of expertise. And these meetings have been so informative. I have to thank you very much for that. On Wednesday, I went to Long Beach, and I have to tell you that all of the Long Beach tenants are all there. And the beach was completely covered from one end to the other. Now, it was Wednesday, and there were spaces between us. And I have to tell you, I thought it was six feet, because I didn't know it was supposed to be 12 feet, because there was no way there was 12 feet between beachgoers. I haven't been there on the weekend, but I have to tell you, I think it's going to be mobbed on the weekend. Now, in trying to cut down on crowds, I just have a suggestion that you ask the tenants not to use the, there is about over 100 cars that will fit in the tenant's guest parking lot, and that you just ask the tenants not to invite guests. I mean, all these tenants, and believe me, I saw them all in their houses, they're all from out of town and some from out of state. And I understand why they're here, and that's fine. It's just that I think you should limit their ability to invite guests and use that enormous big guest parking lot. The, it might come down with, as it gets warmer weather, that the police are going to have to take Long Beach on the weekends, because this was a Wednesday. And and I'm not kidding, I'm not lying, when I say that the whole length of Long Beach, there were bathers, you know, beachgoers like me, I love Long Beach. So I just wanted to put that out there. The other thing is, you know, I go to the transfer station once a week, and I have to tell you, I always thought that that you had to wear a mask. I think they had a flashing sign at one time. So I think a lot of us wear masks. And the other thing is, they only let so many people in. I mean, I made the mistake of going on a Saturday one time. I sat in line for about 20 minutes, because they only let a few cars in. I just wanted to say that I think the transfer station's doing a good job. And I always wear my mask when I go down there, and other people I see are wearing masks.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. Anyone else, Mitch?
Let's do a quick look. Please use the hand raise function or raise your hand in the video. No takers, Mr. Chair.
Okay, what about phone calls?
I checked those. That's what we had, Mr. Duffy.
Okay.
There's no one else. Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. This concludes our joint meeting. We will be meeting next Tuesday, which would be June 2, at 4:00 PM, followed by next Thursday as well. Dr. Wedmore, do you have a question?
Yeah, just, things change, but are they changing that rapidly that we really want to meet twice a week? This agenda and last agenda and the one agenda before that was pretty much the same. And folks get stretched a little bit thin from the meetings. I think we will need to start thinking about meeting only once a week rather than twice a week.
Okay, we can, we can discuss that next meeting. That'd be great. Okay, anyone else on the board comments? All right, let's motion to adjourn. Dr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Dr. Cohen?
Yes, I don't think we approved our minutes, but we can do that at our next meeting.
Okay. Dr. Newman?
Yes.
Dr. Wedmore?
Yes, please.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Selectman Wilkinson? Selectman Donnelly?
She's muted.
But she, she's saying yes. Thank you.
I
Selectman, okay, thanks. Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell votes aye, and Selectman Murphy votes aye, and the motion passes. Thank you all, everything, everyone, for everything you've done tonight. And we will be meeting again, 4 o'clock on June 2, which is this coming Tuesday. Have a nice weekend, everyone.